The meeting minutes of December 13th. Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 13th.
Give me a second, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll move to the student recognition award, starting with Major Edwards.
Good day, everybody. Very happy to be on the screen. Oxford is the fifth grade student of the month. Jill's very conscientious in her work and school, but 100 percent into everything she does and is very organized. Very fast, Jill is attentive and focused and is a generous team player when working in a group. She's also an avid reader and always has work completed for each of her classes. She's friendly to students and staff. She's always willing to assess and help assist fellow classmates all around the room. And she's currently working with a couple of her peers on a project to help those in need and in poor or in need. Stay tuned for details out of weeks. Outside of school, Jill is both an entrepreneur and a fillet fish. She has all of shady scrubs. She makes themselves natural sugar scrubs. She donates a portion of the profits from her business to the animal shelter and so to help the dogs and cats in need. Book last fall at the store there was a great success. She also enjoys spending time with her family. And her older sister Sam, who younger brother Chase, two pets, Jada, the dog and Lola, the cat. Through the past three or four years, she's also involved in the Lions Museum over there. When she grows up, she's motivated to become a marine biologist. She's especially interested in dolphins and whales. The interest that was heightened after spending time at the SeaWorld during the second grade. Jill's dedication to academics, positive attitude, kindness to all, just what makes her stand out in the fifth grade team deserves. Deserving of this honor. Congratulations.
So I gotta thank you for finding time in your busy schedule to be able to come here.
Sure.
So, I'm sure some of the other committee members have some questions, Mr. Shaw?
Well, I'm just fascinated by this business. Tell me about the business. What's the scrubs in the sugar scrubs?
So, I started to make the sugar scrubs to help out animals in need and the sugar scrubs are made out of coconut oil, sugar, food coloring, and essential oils.
So, they're like bones or something for the dog or what?
They're for you. They're for you.
Oh, we eat them?
No, it's like a loofah.
Oh, oh.
It's a body part of the animal shelter.
I'm learning something here.
You're weird.
So, how much were you able to raise and give to the, to the dog, the animal shelter?
Um, I think I raised $60.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's great. And you had, you sold them at the Sterling Fair?
Yes.
That's very nice. Congratulations, that's great. Now you're gonna be a, an entrepreneur.
Alright, well, I feel like I have to talk to you because I just happen to know a little bit about being a marine biologist because before I was a mom and before I got to sit on the school committee, I worked at the aquarium and I worked at the Mystic Aquarium and I trained dolphins, so we might have to talk sometime. You know Matthew Breen, right?
Yeah.
You know he's mine?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so, don't hold that against me, okay? But you and I will have to talk sometime, maybe we can talk about what you wanna do.
Okay.
That would be fun.
Yeah.
That's very cool. You, excellent job, so many good things and you're coming over here next year, right?
Yeah.
What are you excited about?
Um, it, basically everything.
Everything. So, I always ask those fifth graders, what's your favorite subject?
Hmm, probably science.
Science, alright, good. Mrs. Conway will be happy to hear that, I know she's not back there. They're all behind you, but you love them all, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Congratulations, thank you for coming. Alright.
Mr. Fornier's not able to be here tonight, so I'll be presenting for the middle school and the high school. The middle school student of the month, come on up. Oh, there you are. This award goes to Scott Krug, grade six. Scott earns As and his homework is always complete. He also participates and contributes daily in class discussions and activities. He is highly motivated and diligent. He challenges himself often with extra problems and is a positive team member on the current ELA storyboard assignment. And he accepts teacher suggestions and applies them to future assignments. All in all, an excellent student and the sixth grade team is happy to honor him tonight with this award. And I'm gonna ask this lady, would you mind answering a few questions? Then we'll get here a little bit. I'll hold it for you.
Congratulations, Mr. Ponticelli, would you like to go first?
No, congratulations, Scott. And I know, being in sixth grade, anytime we have a sixth grader up here, I like to ask them, because obviously we have some fifth graders that are coming up very soon. What was the biggest challenge adjusting to middle school life, coming across from Major Edwards?
In gym, we have to do a lot of conditioning.
Mm-hmm. And, and what is, what's your favorite thing about middle school?
I like Mr. Walker.
Ah, everybody likes Mr. Walker. Just, no, he has a nickname for everybody, yeah.
Freddie.
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 Alright.
That's connected to like Krug and then, I got it. Awesome. Scott, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's quite the honor.
Good job, Scott. Good job, Scott, thank you for coming.
And, oh, this is mine, total delight to bring up Kayla Mead. For what her mother said is her last student of the month, but I'm not sure about that. I actually think you can get it more than once in high school. So, here we are, we have Kayla Mead here today, Kayla's in grade 11. The following are some of Kayla's accomplishments. She is a member of the student council, although it's more than that, what are you?
I'm at the student council. So, she is a student council member.
Right, so it's an executive board, student council, membership. She is a member of the National Honor Society, she does all of our afternoon announcements and in a very pleasant voice, I might add. She's on the soccer and basketball teams, she makes the honor roll every time, she's a great student leader, she tutors other students, she's an outstanding citizen and friend to others, and most importantly of all, her teachers all enjoy having her in class. Congratulations, Kayla. Would you stay for a minute? Would you stay to answer a couple of questions?
Congratulations, Kayla.
Thank you.
Mrs. Green, would you like to?
It's almost not fair.
I know.
Because I have the personal pleasure of knowing this kid and I've known her for a long time, so to see her grow from this little elementary school kid to this absolutely stellar young lady, I can't even tell you, she is a joy in every way. She has recently been down at Major Edwards working in a first grade classroom with Amy Campbell and I know she loves it as much as they've loved her. Kid always has a smile on her face, she's always willing to jump in with any project, whether you see her in school, outside of school, I don't think you could ever not just love her every day. I don't know her mother, I don't, she's not mine, that's why I love her so much.
Yeah, she can fix it.
She's not mine, but, she's a great kid and Wes Boylston has benefited so much by having her in these hallways because she is one of those students that just gives every day, 110 percent, so I could not be happier for her.
Thank you, Mrs. Green.
I'll echo those comments, I've known Kayla for a long time, watched her grow up as well, and I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
What are you planning on doing?
Um, well, I've always wanted to be a teacher, but now after working with Mrs. Campbell and down at the elementary school, I'm definitely leaning towards being an elementary school teacher. I'm looking at a lot of schools down south and, like, my top choice right now is North Carolina State University, just from whatever, everything I've seen online and their majors and stuff. I'm looking at a couple of schools in North Carolina and then like, the University of Central Florida is on my list, so I got it all planned out.
You're looking for warmer weather, is that what you're saying?
Yes. All this snow is not what I like.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to the student advisory council, did they recall?
Um, in sports, the boys' basketball lost last night to Toronto, 43 to 47. The next game is this Friday at home against Murdoch and they're currently 2 to 6. The girls-
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
He won't be able to hear from the microphone either.
The boys' basketball team lost last night to Toronto, 43 to 47. The next game is Friday at home against Murdoch and they're currently 2 to 6. Girls' basketball won yesterday against Toronto, 48 to 38. The next game is this Friday at Murdoch and they're currently 4 to 3. For clubs, NHS is planning an event for January for the organization of Soul Hope, which is making medical kits for kids and the elderly in Uganda. And induction is March 22nd at 6:00 PM. For student council, they haven't had a meeting since before vacation, but the next meeting is tomorrow morning. The kids are going to Hyannis in March and are getting ready for that currently and that's in 55 days, I believe.
Uh, for National Art Honor Society, they're planning an underwater themed paint night sometime in March and they're inducting new members in May. For In It To End It, April 27th is the day from 6 to 10:00 PM. They're looking to set up the rain date as May 4th, but it may contradict with something, so it's not definite. We're currently designing our save the date cards and looking to get them printed soon. For Friends Inspiring Student Health, we haven't met since before vacation and our next meeting's this Friday. Our focus right now is working with the American Heart Association to pull together an event in February to promote heart health. We're looking to spread awareness about exercise and physical activities as well as creating healthy eating habits. And then for Triumph Music Honor Society, Coffee House is Thursday, January 25th at 6:30. It is $5 per person and $10 per family and it's high school only.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to just acknowledge the camera crew and Mrs. Johnson for filming our meeting and taking our minutes. And now we can move on to the highlight on schools, which is the Major Edwards Fifth Grade Wax Museum.
Yay. You go.
Yeah. I'm really happy to welcome Karen Yorklin, Tina Avery, and this is the fifth grade 15. Last year was their first year of the Living Wax Museum project, which they did in May, and it was a month-long process for students incorporating history, a little bit of drama, long-term writing assignments, and it was really a tremendous success and a great evening. And they're gonna continue that this year and they're gonna do a pretty, pretty presentation about what's upcoming.
Can we get the mic up for them? Do they have a microphone that we can send to them?
Yeah.
That we're gonna reach?
No.
Yeah, we can move this.
So, because in history, things revolve around the people in history, we thought we wanted to focus a little bit on biographies. And I do a little work with biographies in, in the history curriculum in fifth grade and, um, this was my bright eye, no, totally not my bright eye. You know, you've heard of Pinterest, you've heard of teacher pay teachers, that kind of thing, and we did have somebody in our, in our, uh, building down there whose child had done something like this in another school, so we, we sort of co-opted what we heard from them and some things that we've got online and sort of cooled our, our ideas too, all, five of us down there in fifth grade, and put together this project based on some of the things they'd already been doing in the classroom. But to get the names, they were pulled from what we had covered thus far in the year in the curriculum and we didn't want too many repeats, so we pulled the names from, you know, Hattie, if you were, and we didn't want them to repeat more than twice if we could help it, so to spread those names out across the classes and, and then we just sort of dug into the research.
So, it turned into a month-long multidisciplinary project that included many, many moving mechanisms and parts. So, you can see an example of the backdrop, backdrop that each student made that included a hand-drawn portrait, so Miss Roberts was able to help us with that in art class. We created a timeline of important events for each of their lives. Students in computer class researched images related to their person's life. They included their birth and death dates and most importantly, the red push button, which would bring them to life when someone approached them at the wax museum. In addition to this, we'll push it in a second. In addition to that, in language arts, each student was required to write a five to 10-page research paper, double-spaced, with creative and descriptive headings telling all about their research person's life. They had to come up with appropriate costuming and then they needed to write a three-to-four sentence memorized speech that they would give when their button was pushed with two to three additional facts. So, we have some examples of some of our wax figures, some pictures of some other students, so King George III is one of ours. Scott Krug was George Washington last year, he was fantastic. We've got a follower here, Roger Williams, and final, oh, Bradley Collins, Phyllis Sweetley, and Thomas Paine, who has come to visit us today. Mrs. Green, would you like to push Thomas Paine's button and we'll see what happens here?
We push everybody else.
My name is Thomas Paine and I was born in Thibaut, United Kingdom in 1737. I am best known for my writings in common sense and nature reason. Sadly, after a long life of reading, writing, I died in 1809.
Mr. Shaw, would you like to push the button again and we'll see what happens?
I ended up dropping out of grammar school at a young age.
See what happens? Some memorized several facts.
You are still able to visit my childhood house.
So, we welcome you to join us for this year's Living Wax Museum on Wednesday, May 30th at 6:00 PM in our gym at Major Edwards. We get to see the current fifth grade students in action.
Such a great idea. The kids, do the kids do all the work on that?
Yes.
Their own?
Well, we, we do it at school, yes, but we, so we support them in that process. We give them the tools necessary, but it's a very, we, we encourage them to do it as independently as possible.
Right.
We want them to be responsible for their-
For their person.
Yeah, right, and different parts of it happen in different classes, so for example, that portrait, they're working on it in the art class, the research paper they're working on both in social studies and in ELA. The timelines, we've already done some timelines in social studies, so they know how to do that, so then they're working on that as they're doing their research and in social studies class, so it's happening all over the place. We, we spend a day with those gigantic sheets of paper laid out wherever we can find space, assembling everything. Right? And then a day in the gym with the tables out, we had music stands up on tables to hang things from and on the wall and Mr. Wiggles said that he thought maybe he could build us some things this year to sort of prop them up so that they wouldn't be stuck all over the walls, because they were falling down. Last year at that time it was exceedingly hot, so everything was falling.
Not sticking.
So, yeah, so we tried to do something a little better this year to keep them up, but it was a lot. So much fun, we wanna do it again. Yep.
Hi, love this project.
We do too.
And you have three of us with fifth graders.
Yeah.
So, I can guarantee you that more than half the school committee will be there this year.
It'll be a quorum.
Thank you so much.
That brings us to the community input section.
Too much work.
Dr. Shaw, you have, we have the budget planning, the public hearing March 14th, is that at 6:00 PM?
6:15.
6:15? So, there are more to that or is it just an announcement?
Yes, I'm gonna make that announcement, that the, the public hearing for the FY19 budget will be held in this room on March 14th, 2018, it will begin at 6:15. Copies of the budget book, the, the final budget book before that hearing will be available the Monday and the Tuesday before that meeting, so March 12th and 13th in our office between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00, anybody can come in and look at those books.
Next, we have a few warrants to approve. I got a motion for the payables warrant dated January 15th, 2018.
Make a motion, we approve the payables warrant dated January 15th, 2018.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, to approve the payroll warrant for December 29th and January 12th.
We'll make a motion to approve the payroll warrants dated December 29th, 2017, and January 12th, 2018.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, subcommittee reports with the policy subcommittee.
Alright, so, Mr. Morrissey, Dr. Shaw, and I met this evening prior to the meeting. We have some review to do in the policy sections A, B, and C. There are some additional policies that Mass Association of School Committees is talking about putting in. We have some changes we wanna make to some of our policies and we will bring those forward next month for a first reading. There is also a policy that is being brought about by the legislature. It's Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Guidance on School Policies Regarding Substance Use Prevention. This is something that was supposed to be implemented this year, however, they were supposed to notify us prior to the start of the year about implementation, as well as the fact that there was no funding available. This is basically something that we are not too sure how this is gonna work out. There are some things in here that are a little troubling, to say the least. One of the things in here that is of concern is the fact that we would have our school nurse conducting basically an interview with students in grade levels. Right now, I don't think it's determined exactly what grade levels, but basically having conversations with students about whether or not they are using any kind of The troubling part about that is, is that these nurses, if a child answers in the affirmative, those nurses are then not able to communicate that to the parents, even though these are minors. So, I think that we have a little trouble with that. You know, I feel like if we're going to do something like this and a child gives information about something like that, we wanna be able to share that with the parents and this is basically saying we don't have that right. So, that's a little concerning. So, we're gonna have to wait and see what Mass Association of School Committees comes out with, with respect to a policy. We will kind of follow along with that and see where this takes us, but we'll watch it closely.
So, question?
Yeah.
The chair, two questions. First, you said there was no funding at the time when this came out. Is there funding now for this or is this another unfunded mandate?
So, the, the law specifies that this program is subject to appropriation. There's two organizations named in the program, one is the Department of Education, one is the Department of Public Health. This year, the Department of Public Health did receive some funding for this, the Department of Education did not. So, we are not receiving any funding at all to implement this program. But, the provision of the law just says it's subject to appropriation, it doesn't say who the appropriation needs to be to. So, the advice of my superintendent's association was that we should proceed as if there was funding appropriated for this, even though it didn't come directly to us, just as a precautionary step. So, we're in the process of developing our own policy to implement this law.
The second question I have, obviously they've targeted the nurse to do this activity.
It could be a guidance counselor or a nurse, yeah.
Because I would imagine the guidance counselor comes across this situation probably more than the nurse does, because they're counseling the kid's going to bed.
Most places are having nurses implement it, that's where we're sort of holding off to see what the policies that are developed and used, utilized by other school districts say before we latch on to any language or specific people. But it could be either, under the law it doesn't specify.
Will we need to hire someone else to help?
That's an interesting question, I, I don't know.
Okay.
The survey would need to be given every year at two grade levels. A lot of people are talking about grade seven, grade 10, you know, depending on the length of the interview, in the number of students that you have, that's a significant amount of time for the nurse to, or the guidance counselor to spend with each student, so I, I don't actually know yet.
So, it's one-on-one, it's not with a class?
No, it's one-on-one interview, it's a, it's an individual survey given to an individual student.
That's a lot of time.
Oh, yes it is, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
It's just, it's frustrating, you know, educators are mandated reporters and anybody, school nurse especially, guidance counselor, and so the state is asking them to put aside the responsibility and the welfare of the students that they serve, it's-
The one thing I will say, Mr. Ponticelli, just so, just to answer your question a little bit, there is a provision in the law that if the child were in a life-threatening situation or, I forgot the language of it, but I'll get it for you, that, that the person could then disclose the information, I think Mr. Morrissey has it.
Except in cases of immediate medical emergency, disclosure is otherwise required by law. So, some immediacy to, to an emergency situation or-
So some immediacy to an emergency situation or in subsequent law, a situation requires that disclosure?
I don't know.
How does that interact?
Any seventh grader using drugs is an immediate emergency.
I would say so.
You know?
One can imagine, I mean, if somebody is taking heroin, that would be an immediate concern in my world anyway. But, you know, this, or disclosure is otherwise required by state law, what does that mean? I don't know. So we're kind of waiting on some draft policies to kind of figure out what that looks like.
We know obviously there's additional information that's going to come from this, but the one thing I could potentially see the reason for this would be to gain trust from a student because if they think that they're just going to be, you know, turned over to authorities or their parents or whatever, they may just lie about it.
Right. But the school's not the one that's going to provide them with the support if it's a problem. It's going to be the parents. And the parents need to know. I mean, you know, we can all sit here and say, well, we would know if something was going on with our kids, but in the epidemic that's going on now, it's so many parents that don't know. And I mean, if you have that child and you have an opportunity to have that information early on so that you can do something about it, you bet I'd want it.
Sure, good. Understood.
I do want you to remember, kids who are in seventh grade, some of them are 12. Right? So that's the, the age bands here are, you know, you see them come here, they're young. They're young kids.
Anything else with policy?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
And move on to reports, starting with Major Edwards.
As the holiday season comes to a close each year, it opens up the testing season that has already begun. When we return from vacation, we agreed with our new M-CAS passwords from the Department of Education. I met with grades three, four, and five on Monday afternoon to review the upcoming schedule, draft and dependent schedule for this spring's testing. Denise Levesque is already underway. Access testing are here, all students that commence this week, so it is upon us already. Also, when we return, happy to see some new partitions in the boys' T-Wing bathrooms that were ordered over the summer that I believe arrived the day before school started. They were very heavy and some were cumbersome to put together, but they were assembled over vacation and I think it's the first edition of model into that bathroom in 30 years. The kids were thrilled to see that. They're heavy duty and will hopefully last a long time down there. I'd like to thank Sharon Belkankewitz, Denise Levesque, and Lindsay Morse for beginning planning for the Read Across America Week coming up before February vacation. We have several events planned along with an author visit. I'll elaborate more on that during February's meeting. And... Can you go to the other end?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Morrissey? Do you have a report, Mr. Forni, or no?
It's in, it's just, yes, it's in writing, yeah. The one thing I will say is I, you might want to check out the gym on your way out. The new mats are there, the new...
Oh, neat. With the lion on them.
With the lion on them, yeah, very cool, yeah.
All right. Mrs. Strain, do you have anything to report?
Nothing. Nothing, completely. Been to school two days. Feels like.
Mr. Ponceley, you have extra time with Mrs. Strain?
He needs, he needs time.
You're under a time constraint.
Actually, I have a special report for you this evening. We're six months into this fiscal year. You can see the available dollars that we have and a couple of small deficit accounts that we'll need to transfer to correct that. Facilities, as was mentioned over the holidays, we do have our cosmetic stuff and put on cushions for our bathrooms. Gym mats just got started today. We have finished this down on the inside. We're going up on that side, open shop tomorrow. And we saw Watson Fargo's down on the weight room downstairs that they're hopefully will be having some bids back even by next meeting or in February or in March. Any questions? Oh, I love, I'd love to take two, as was mentioned before, aside by a conversation over here between the two gentlemen. During the cold spell, no lights at all, no freeze-ups anywhere in either building. Heat running on occupied mode because we weren't shutting down to unoccupied. But go through meat potatoes, you'll see how the school districts around us, that has potential pipe breaks. It's pretty disruptive to the educational process if that happens. So it's worth, we're going to pay a little bit more utilities next month, but it's well worth it.
Absolutely. Less than fixing all the pipes.
Exactly. I know the insurance company does that, but it's still... That's all I have. Hopefully we get out of the wrestling room by Friday.
Thank you. Dr. Schopfer?
I've given you your regular attendance data for teachers and students and your suspension data. Also, I've provided you with a list of the professional development that's occurred in the district in the first four months of school. We've held eight in-district professional development classes and that covered a lot of our staff. And also, the district has paid for 22 courses that teachers have taken in other locations so far this year. The other piece of information I think is interesting this year is our school choice enrollment. As you know, we're trying to use our school choice funds to pay for our vocational expenses and we're getting very close to being able to accomplish that. So much so that this year we have about 20 fewer students in school choice because we didn't accept any, or very few. So we're down from 162 to 144 this year and I've given you a list of the communities from which those students come. And I also wanted you to see the five-year, actually I gave you the seven-year vocational enrollment trend. In 2012, we were at 73 students enrolled in vocational. This year, we're 53 students. We had a high cost of about $1,173 and this year we're at about $849,000. You know, we'll see where it goes next year, but that's a much better look than we had been seeing. So we, realistically, we can continue to use our school choice as a mechanism to pay that bill. And it does seem to make some sense because it's actually a school, a school choice that is a, the leading to go to a vocational program is a school choice, choice and option. So we're, it doesn't, it's not one-for-one. We get about $5,000, we pay about $10 now for a student to go. So we take two students for every student that goes to vocational. That's better than taking three. So we're, we can drop down our number of school choice students. We also are very cognizant of the fact that we don't know how many students are going to come from new development in the town. So we haven't seen any though. So somebody asked earlier, have we seen any enrollment from the place that opened in Oakdale? We have not seen any enrollment from there yet and I'll keep you apprised of that as it happens. You also do have a snapshot of our number of students in that grade and the demographic information about them. You know, how many receive a free or reduced lunch, how many are on IEPs, 504 plans, and then the, you know, profile of students for other categories. We're currently at 927 students in the district. And that is down from last year, but as I said, it was actually an intentional decrease in students. One thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, you all have got a copy of this pamphlet in your packet. It's from the New England School Development Council. NESDEC, as their acronym goes, is an organization that helps school districts with long-term planning. And I would like to bring them on board to help us with our five-year strategic plan, just one aspect of it, which is the aspect regarding the buildings. They would be an organization that potentially could do for us the demographic study, the study of the building structures of the building, they would be able to take a look at our educational plans and see what kinds of spaces we would need for those kinds of educational plans to come true. It's a very minimal cost to join their organization. For a district our size, it's about $650 to join. To access those services is obviously another fee, but I feel like it's a good $600 spent if we do that this year and get involved with them and have them start to know West Boylston and to take an interest in what we're trying to accomplish here long-term. And the last thing I have for you is just your committee, and as you know, I represent you on the FLAC Board for the Collaborative, and they have presented you with their annual report, which they do every year. It includes their fiscal report and their programmatic report. So that's attached to this. That's all I have for you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions, Dr. Schopfer?
Mark, do you need a vote for the NESDEC?
I don't think I do. I mean, I'm just going to join.
Okay.
I'm going to have us join and if there's any significant capital expenditure, I will bring it to you for a vote. But right now, we're just, you know, I just wanted you to know that if somebody from NESDEC calls you, we are affiliated. And they do conduct, they have people who are former educators and people who are educators currently who do conduct their surveys and do work with them. They're very reputable and I have worked with them several times in other districts and I appreciate the work that they do and I think they do a fine job in managing it. So I'm happy to work with them here.
One other question from Mrs. Strain, and I don't know if you have this in front of you, a demographic snapshot. For pre-K, we have 33 students, 17 of which are listed as being on IEPs.
Yeah, because the preschools are purposely developed for...
Providing extra services to get these kids.
For special ed students.
Okay.
So basically, it's a special ed program that we tuition in regular ed students. So almost 50% of those students.
Okay. I just, that number kind of stuck out?
There's 15 kids at a preschool program and it's an eight-to-seven ratio. Seven students are on IEPs, eight students aren't, and that's under the regulation.
I could give you a little bit more. We are mandated by law to educate students who have special needs from the time they're three years old.
Right, early intervention.
And the best model for that is to have students who are peers without needs in the same classroom. It makes a better mix of a classroom for the students and that's by law.
And the other thing is preschoolers do not qualify for 504s. So even if it's a very simple need like speech or something like that, they have to go on an IEP.
Are they reevaluated when they go to kindergarten and they can go on to a 504?
Part of the regulation is every three years. So not necessarily right when they go to kindergarten, but they are maybe a year after or so.
It just seemed like a lot.
It is, because that's the, I know we have this question every year, but that's the design of preschool.
Okay.
So if you, you know, so if you look at it as the years go on, that, you know, and they get into upper grades, it's not going to seem as much. Because those preschoolers are anywhere from three to five right now.
Okay.
So there's a lot of age range. So not all those kids are going to kindergarten next year, maybe five, six of them. So then you look at your numbers, you're only going to have that many in kindergarten. And then the following year, there might be another five or six, so.
Okay.
So it should always be 50%?
Yeah. Because that's how the state, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Actually, 51.5 isn't as good as 50, right, Jerry?
Well, what you've got to understand is that we have two integrated programs. So you've got eight and seven ratio, eight regular and seven, and then we have a self-contained afternoon classroom. So it's, that's taking all those kids and putting them in one pool, you know, one pool.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll move on to school community reports. Mr. Ponceley, do you have anything?
Nope, nothing.
Dr. Schopfer?
The only thing I have is, the school has an interact club, which is affiliated with Rotary. And I know that they've been doing some things that I didn't hear from the, Mr. Counsel, but they are shoveling snow for the seniors. And so after that big storm, remember it was zero degrees the next day? They are out at seniors' homes shoveling snow. And they have homes that they have to go to and they're aligned to. So I really give them credit for being out in that bone-chilling weather, shoveling seniors' snow. On top of that, the Rotary has again come up with and offered $500 and they're going to go to the food packing event that they did last year, which was a tremendous success. It's a really energized thing and I'd suggest anybody to go to it. Kevin Bjorkman was here, I would probably attest to that. It was a lot of fun. And so they have that planned and they have to raise some money to also support that. But I just wanted to share a little bit about what the interact club is doing and, you know, needs to, it's still on the early stages and it needs to continue to grow, so.
Yeah. On January 22nd, the townwide planning committees have a public forum on, for the draft chapters for the town strategic plan, of which the school department has one. So that's 7:00, January 22nd, the town hall will be reviewing the Economic Development Board, school committee, housing, and transportation. Superintendent's going to be emailing us out. I'm not going to be able to attend that night, so I was going to look for volunteers to represent us. We don't have to decide on that now, but Dr. Schopfer will be emailing us.
I don't have anything either. I hope that we can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Like to make a motion to adjourn? A second there.
Any discussion? All those in favor?